Call to order the June 15th Ellsworth City Council meeting. So in accordance with an act to implement provisions necessary to the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of Maine in response to the COVID-19 public health emergency as enacted to read section G-1, one MRSA, section 403-a, public proceedings through remote access during declaration of state emergency due to COVID-19. The meeting will be held live at One City Hall Plaza in the City Hall council chambers with only the city council, city manager, and the allowable number of participants allowed according to the governor's executive order present. Citizens may email questions and public comments on the public hearing agenda items as well as other items this evening to Chair Dale Hamilton at DHamilton@EllsworthMaine.gov prior to and throughout the duration of the meeting. The meeting will be broadcast live on the city of Ellsworth Maine Facebook page and YouTube page as well as recorded and made available live on Spectrum Channel 1303. I will also add that if you do want to submit public comments for the public comment portion of the agenda, you need to submit your full name and your address of residence so that we can make that a part of the public record. So with that, the item two, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my
Join the meeting.
Item three, Rules of Order. We follow Robert's Rules of Order and any other rules that we determine during our annual planning meeting. And so with that, Counselor Miller, did you have a?
I move to add an item to the agenda, executive session to discuss the condition acquisition or the use of real or personal property permanently attached to real property or interest therein or disposition of publicly held property or economic development only if premature disposition of information would prejudice the competitive or bargaining position of the body or agency in accordance with MRSA Title I, Chapter 13, Section 405, Paragraph 6C. On the part of the committee or anticipated the following, actions as needed on the part of the committee are anticipated on the following executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. In order to add an item to an agenda, we will need a unanimous vote. All those in favor? The vote is unanimous. We will make that item number 23 and move adjournment to item 24. Item four, adoption of the Ellsworth City Council minutes from the following meeting, May 18th, 2020, regular meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion. We have a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Item number five, city manager's report. Manager Cole.
Probably the most significant development since May's meeting is that we have reopened City Hall, at least in the sense of the current conditions. Staff that had been working from home have now come back to City Hall. We've spread people out, made accommodations, Plexiglas, and masks, and done things to make sure, to ensure a safe environment. We are now open five days a week to the public by appointment only, but the appointment system seems to be working very well. It's good for our people because they can control the number of people coming in. We have designated parking spots out front here where people sit till we come out to get them. No more than four people in the building at a time. It's good for the customers because they have a specific time they can come, like on their lunch hour or a convenient time during the day. So we're moving on. The other thing I would mention is that the harbor is open. The new walkway is substantially complete down at the harbor. There's still some work done on landscaping and backing up to the concrete structure, but that's been done. Oak Street, nobody been over Oak Street yet. A vast improvement. Still some cleanup work, but that's been done. And also, there's some other projects in the wings. I know that Public Works Director is on the agenda to brief us on local roads later, so I'll leave it with that. And that's my report, Mr. Chair and Counselors.
Any questions? Item number six, committee reports. Any counselors attended any recent committees?
I did.
Counselor Moore.
Thank you, Dave, for that introduction to the harbor report. So far, they've collected $21,762.94 for various fees, docking rights and so forth. GAF tech has been down to make some adjustments to the fuel supply that has been put in place, and it's really working well. People seem to like it very much. You can pull up to the dock, and the pump is right there on the dock. It's a little hard to reach it from the parking lot if you wanted to get sugar-free gasoline. And additionally, as the city manager mentioned, the probably biggest piece of work that's done at the harbor was the work on the pathway in the section that connects out to Water Street. The sections of the parking lot that had been disturbed by the installation of the fuel tanks have been repaved, and while it looks a little bit like a checkerboard, it really works very, very well. And thanks to KJ Dugas Construction for assisting the Ellsworth Public Works Department in getting that paving completed. Due to a variety of factors, the harbor did not officially open until June 1st this year, but they did provide birthing of boats beginning May 15th, so it hasn't been really that much of a hiccup. And lastly, the city's hired two part-time seasonal employees to work as deputy harbor masters this season, and they are Kim Shea and Sean Merrill. We have, our former harbor masters are serving in that capacity out of the Public Works Building, and the two assistant or deputy harbor masters will actually be in the harbor to run things on a daily basis, and they seem to be doing a very good job so far. And that's about it.
Thank you. Any other committees? Seeing none. Item seven, citizens' comments. So I have one comment that has come in that I will read. This is a public comment from Library Board of Trustees for tonight's city council meeting. The Board of Trustees is dismayed by the action of the city council, and particularly in the way that this post mischaracterizes the use of the library by non-residents. As was discussed at a meeting of the Board of Trustees earlier this year, the library has already changed the policy to require surrounding towns to either, one, contribute a standardized per capita fee for use of the Ellsworth Public Library by their own residents, or, two, the library will charge each resident of that town the standard non-resident card fee. In fact, the surrounding towns have, for the most part, been paying into the library operations budget for many years. It has never been the library's policy for surrounding towns and residents to use the library for free. The city council had already expressed a desire to see a greater contribution of funding from surrounding towns, and this plan was designed specifically in reaction to that conversation. The new policy was due to take effect July 1st, but due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the board voted to postpone the implementation by six months because of the hardship it would impose on many of the longstanding patrons and community members, and the fact that many towns have simply not been able to hold town meetings and vote on this change to their funding. Decreasing the city-provided funding by this amount will necessarily reduce the entire library budget. The $100,000 shortfall cannot be made by user fees and is likely to result in significant reduction of library services. After the library's board's December 17th meeting with both counselors Phillips and Hamilton, we proactively removed more than $34,000 from the budget to avoid the situation as they had already mentioned the possibility of a six-figure reduction. This made for a $57,000 decrease from the 2019 budget. At a time when so many community members are in desperate need of library services, the Board of Trustees believes that this action by the city council will harm children, adults, and senior members of Ellsworth. There remain many possible solution to the council's need to decrease the overall city budget, and propose that a smaller percentage across city departments may be a more fair and equitable way to decrease city funding. It is our sincere hope that this decision is reversed, and we are grateful to the residents of Ellsworth and surrounding towns for expressing their own dismay. Sincerely, Board of Trustees, Ellsworth Public Library. And that is the only comment I've received so far. So I will just follow up, make a couple brief comments in terms of, I want to stress, and I would ask the public to go back to watch the budget meeting. Contrary to what has been portrayed as a move to balance the budget in a robo-email, what is the truth is that the proposal to reduce the library budget was not about reducing the city budget to achieve a certain level, and I know that because I was the one that raised the issue. It was to address a fairness issue in terms of how much the city of Ellsworth taxpayers are paying for a library and the surrounding communities where they do pay some fees, as the trustees have stated, it is a very tiny percentage of the overall budget, and it has been. This is not a new discussion. This has been a discussion I know I've been involved with for the past three years, where we've tried to work proactively to come up with other solutions to help bring the cost of the library in line with other communities of our size and without damaging the library. And I do not believe, contrary to the position that this is going to be damaging to children, families, and seniors, that is, I think, a real mischaracterization of what would happen. The council does not maintain line item control over the budget, but I believe there are ways to achieve savings and bring it in line with other libraries of this size to release the burden, and I would hope that surrounding communities would then step up and pay their fair share, which over time would then increase the library budget, and they would have more resources at that point. That is the purpose for the reduction, and we've been talking about this for many years. We've been trying to move the needle, and we just haven't gained the kind of traction that I believe is appropriate for the kind of budget that this library has. So that's just in response to some of the comments. Hopefully, that puts it into better perspective. It's not just to balance a budget. It's not to get to a number. It's to address the fairness issue and continue to support the library with very significant taxpayer funding. Counselor Hammond.
Do you think that maybe we could approach it as a step-down method over like the next two to three years where we would cut a percentage now and then work up towards where ideally it would be in line with other communities?
Well, I would say that that is an approach we've been trying to take, I can only speak for myself, for the past three years that I've been involved, is to look at that and to achieve that. My comment last, at the last budget meeting, was that I just think it's at a point of drawing the line in the sand. And when I hear the argument, and we've received emails, and it was in this statement as well, that people are concerned with residents from other communities and their ability to afford what would be a comparable per capita rate at this time of the economy, I just find it hard to not take the position of supporting the Ellsworth taxpayers for the same reason, and to simply say, well, everybody else in other communities are having it tough, so let's continue to carry that and ignore what is happening with our taxpayers. I just don't think that that's a fair option, and I think we need to be able to move on that. And there doesn't seem to be a willingness to get to that agreement. If, for me personally, if there was some movement, that there was a strong sentiment and a direction where that was going to happen, I believe Counsel Blanchette asked the question about, we understood that that was going to happen July 1, and we were told, well, it was postponed, and this statement plays that out. So that willingness to take that step just hasn't been there, and for me, that's why I've taken the position that I've taken.
And isn't the Ellsworth mill rate higher than the surrounding communities by at least 50%? Ours is, what, 1880?
Yeah.
Give or take?
For the manager, Cole.
Well, typically, a service center community has a higher tax rate than the small communities around, but that could be in that range.
But the mill rate of the surrounding towns that we're asking to contribute is less than half of ours, so.
So we will, we will continue on budget discussions as we move forward, and this item will continue to be there, and there'll be other opportunities to address this. The community can continue to weigh in on this as well. As we noted, that the July 14th vote for the school board, we will, tonight, what we will be doing is taking a vote as a continuing resolution with the budget, so we will not be finalizing our budget tonight, and so there will be ample time for individuals to continue to weigh in on this and to continue to address this. And so with that, Counselor Green.
Am I able to make a point, or are we moving on? I don't want to hold up.
Yeah.
Okay. You know, I want to stress again, too, this is equality for the Ellsworth taxpayer, okay? Clearly, this should be a regional library, and I'm not going to go down that discussion, but one of the things that I said I would do if I was elected was to compare Ellsworth's departments to similar communities of our size and see where the differences are in the costs and the services that are provided. So I went through, Ellsworth's population is 8,000. The tax revenue roughly is about $21 million. The library's proposed appropriation budget is $561,000, which is 2.6% of the total tax revenue raised, which is $70, roughly $70 per person or per capita. So then we go to Freeport, 8,500 people, $26,000 tax revenue base. The FY '19 library appropriation was $453,000. That's 1.7% of their tax revenue, which is much lower than the 2.6, and the per capita cost is $53. Go to Old Orchard Beach, 8,900 population, 28 million in tax revenue. Library appropriation, 288,000. That's 1% of their tax revenue. That's $32 per capita. Yarmouth, 8,500 population, $30 million in tax revenue, 502,000 in library appropriation, that's 1.7%, $59 per capita cost. Kittery, 9,800 population, 26 million in tax revenue, 467,000, 1.8 of tax revenue, $47 per capita cost. So clearly, there is inequality here between Ellsworth and the other communities that have way more in tax revenue than Ellsworth, and $70 versus, the next highest is $59. I just, I really feel, you know, to get to this point, this is what we need to do to be fair to Ellsworth residents. I appreciate all the emails that we've received. It's not surprising to me. It is a gem. I agree with that totally. You know, 27 of the emails that we received were from non-residents. I would, I would encourage you to talk to your town selectmen and to push the issue with them, to support the library, so.
So I would just say to the public, as we, for next, for July, when we take up the budget, that we don't know the state of rules and regulations around being able to have more individuals present. I'm going to assume at this point that we will probably continue to be under the executive orders somewhat. However, I would certainly encourage individuals who have an opinion on this matter to send it to any one of us, and certainly be prepared for the July meeting where there can be a more robust discussion on this, on this matter. So that will be available for everybody, and I just want to stress that that will be definitely a time when everybody can weigh in during a public meeting, but also encourage you to continue to weigh in on it up to that timeframe. With that, we'll move on to presentation of awards. Item number eight, Troy Byers for 30 years of service with the Ellsworth Police Department.
I'm not sure if Troy is here tonight or not. We'll make sure he gets the award though.
Read it then. City of Ellsworth proudly presents a certificate of service to Troy Byers in recognition of your 30 years of service to the Ellsworth Police Department in your various capacities from police officer to MDA special agent to your current position of captain, your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community of contribute to the improvement of the city of Ellsworth. Presented this 15th day of June 2020, David A. Cole, city manager, I, Noel Grindel, city Unfinished business. And then consent agenda, consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item nine, council order number 062000, request of the deputy treasurer, tax collector to set the real estate and personal property tax due dates at September 10th, 2020, and March 11th, 2021. Item 10, council order number 062001, request of the deputy treasurer, tax collector for an order of the municipal officers on the application of real estate and personal property tax payments. This order will allow for the tax collector and treasurer to apply tax payments against the oldest unpaid tax bills. Does any counsel want to remove an item? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move approval was presented.
You have a motion?
Second.
You have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? New business. Item 11, public hearing in action on the applications for new or renewal for the following licenses. And let's see, so these will be a public hearing, so I just want to ask the public, if you're looking to comment on any one of the public hearings, to please, feel free to email now, and I will grab them as the individual item comes up for discussion. So the first, Pavita Vistout Young, DBA Thai Sana, 321 High Street, for renewal of a city Class C license liquor and vitueller, and renewal of a state restaurant malt and vinous Class III and IV liquor license. Open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Let me check for any comments. I'll pause because I know there's a delay. So while we're waiting for the public, any counselors have a question, comment? Madam Clerk, I assume everything's in order with all of these? And I'm seeing no comments coming through. I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing's closed.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the request of Thai Sana for renewal of city Class C license and state restaurant malt and vinous Class C for liquor licenses.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Lourdes Empire Incorporated, DBA Dragonfire, 248 State Street, for renewal of a city Class B license, vitueller, liquor, and arcade, less than 12 devices, and renewal of a state restaurant Class III and IV malt and vinous liquor license. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Going back to check to see if there are any comments. No comments yet. Counselors, any comments while we're waiting? Seeing no comments, I'll close the public hearing. Counselors?
Move to approve Lourdes Enterprises' business license application.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Ryan Langley, DBA Union River Lobster Pot, 8 South Street, for renewal of a city Class C license, vitueller and liquor, and renewal of a state restaurant Class I, II, III, IV, malt, spiritus, and vinous liquor license. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Looking for comments. No comments have come through. I'll close the public hearing. Counselors?
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the request of Union River Lobster Pot for renewal of their licenses.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Votes unanimous. And Douglas J. Keim and Rachel E. Wallace, DBA Homestead Motel and Cottages, 143 Bucksport Road, for renewal of a city lodging license. I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Check for comments. Seeing no comments coming through, I will close the public hearing. And counselors?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the Homestead Motel and Cottages on Bucksport Road for renewal of city lodging license.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Votes unanimous. Item 12, public hearing in action on approving the establishment of the Oriole Senior Municipal Affordable Housing Development and Tax Increment Financing District Development Program.
Mr. Chair, counselors, Kevin Bunker of Developers Collaborative, who is the representative of Oriole Way Senior Housing, is on the phone tonight. As you recall, he did a presentation back in May on the Oriole Way Senior Housing Project, the proposed TIF, and why it would be a win-win for both the city and the developer. I would add to his presentation that back in 2015, the council ordered a senior housing study at that time, which showed a very acute need for senior housing units in the area. So this certainly meets a well-demonstrated need. The way tax increment financing works is it takes new investment, which in this case would be $3,280,000, and takes it off the tax rolls in the sense of state funding formulas. So Mr. Bunker, that evening showed you how through the benefits of TIF, the city would actually end up with actually a little bit more tax revenue than it normally would even if it was taxed in a normal way. It's a 50/50 arrangement. 50% of the taxes would go back from the district to the developer to help finance that project. The other 50% would go to the city to go in a special fund, which in this case would be designated to offset expenses at the Moore Center, specifically the debt service associated with the Moore Center. So in that sense, it's taking what would otherwise be general taxation obligations off the table. So there's a lot of benefits to the project. I think it's a good use of TIF dollars. It's very similar to the Leonard Lake senior housing TIF that the council did, I believe, five years ago, or five or six years ago. So I'm recommending, or requesting council approval, and Mr. Bunker's on the phone to answer any questions you may have.
And I would just say to the public, this is a public hearing, so if you have any comments that you want to make, feel free to send those in, and when comments that you want to make, feel free to send those in, and when I open the public hearing, I will certainly read those. Councillors? Councilwoman?
I think I, she had a question first.
Oh, no worries. I noticed that on the valuation and the numbers, typically with a TIF, it's heavy on the front load, and then the valuation and the tax declines over the year or over the next X number of years. But all of these numbers are still the same as far as the valuation goes. I can't imagine that it's going to be valued at the exact same dollar amount now and in And then, of course, the mill rate is also exactly the same over the next 30 years, and that's not going to happen. I had some questions as far as what does this do to the Ellsworth general tax base? Does this increase the overall tax base of Ellsworth as a whole? And if so, will that ultimately increase the tax owed by residents that are not involved in the TIF?
Okay. Here are two questions there. The first one being, why is, are the valuations static? Again, I'll defer to Mr. Bunker in a moment, but these are real estate values, and generally over time they go up, not down. But the other factor being, doesn't matter what you project, the city will accrue whatever the valuation is, that benefit will accrue in these proportions to both parties. So it's a good faith estimate. I think it's a conservative estimate. Kevin, would you like to address that?
Yeah, I can add to that a little bit. I've done a lot of affordable housing tips in a lot of communities, and generally, we use the assumptions that the city asks us to use. And I think we last addressed this, probably dated back in Oriole Way, when we were talking about, okay, what should we use for mill rate assumptions and valuation assumptions? And we talked about the idea that, like you said, over 30 years, there's no such thing as an accurate production of the penny, but if, you know, the other way to do it is to assume 1% or 2% in assessed value and 1% or 2% in tax rate, and if you're kind of around 50%, you're going to come out sort of in the same place. So for example, in this, in this TIF, what am I supposed to eat? The loss due to fiscal formulas for the city is right around 50%, and it's right around a 50% TIF. So as long as that happens, you're going to be within a few dollars, one way or the other, of breaking even, or in this particular projection, slightly making money, really no matter what those assumptions are. It's a question of order of magnitude, but not necessarily of impact to the tax base. As long as the 50% holds true and the other 50% holds true, it's, the assumptions are just, they can, you know, they can, even though you know those things will change, to try to guess what they'll be maybe does as much harm as good. In the end, it doesn't really change the net result.
I would add to that, you can add 2% a year for inflation, but then you're talking about inflated dollars 25, 30 years out. So having done TIFs in my career, it's better just to use real dollars and flat fund it. But no matter, as Mr. Bunker says, it's going to be split on the 50-50 deal, no matter where the future takes those dollars.
Okay, the second part of my question is, what does this do to the average property value of the people around Ellsworth? Is that going to increase with increased use of services, increased use of police, fire with the other part of that housing, increased use of education services? Is there a net benefit, or is the overall tax base increasing and causing an increase in the amount owed by each taxpayer?
Well, senior citizens generally don't contribute a lot of students to the school system. I know there are cases where grandparents do raise kids, so I'm sure they're exceptions, but generally speaking, it's not a burden on the school system. And so, no, we have not done any kind of impact analysis, but generally, senior housing has low impact on services. They don't get a lot of police calls necessarily. I mean, things can happen, but I don't think it's a high-impact use.
Mr. Bunker, is this purely senior housing based on age, or are there disabled folks as well that would qualify to move in here regardless of age?
No, it's all 62-plus.
Thank you.
I think I heard the whole question, which was, it's a little, it's a little hard to hear, but I think that what I heard the question was, can folks who are disabled move in that are not seniors? And the answer to that is no, everyone has to be 62-plus.
Thank you.
All right, then I will move to open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Not received any comments at this time, but I will give it a minute. No comments are coming through. Therefore, I will close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have a clarification. Some previous year, when we were talking about other forms of projects such as this, I believe I heard that in a home project with multiple homes, that if a child in that home is sent to Ellsworth Schools, the cost of educating that student roughly equaled the amount of taxes, give or take, that was paid. What Mr. Bunker's talking about is senior citizens where that doesn't, that isn't a factor, having a student come in there. So to me, that makes sense, that we would look favorably on such an arrangement. I'm not sure if my, what I heard is accurate, but it seems reasonable.
Agent Chakol, any?
Yes, I think you're spot-on, councillor. And I would add that this project was one of seven projects in the state selected under this program. These were senior housing bond funds that came through the voters of Maine, and there was a competition, one of seven projects, so it competed very well, you know, on that kind of criteria.
Councilwoman Haplan?
The typical reason for a TIF is for a blighted area or a depressed area within a city to kind of boost the value of that area. This particular project is part senior housing for the TIF portion, but then also moderately-priced apartments in addition to that. And I'm not so sure that if you're having moderately-priced apartments, that that qualifies as a blighted area. Perhaps Mr. Bunker can explain more, or you.
Did you hear the question?
Yeah, there's a couple of things wrapped up in that again. I think I heard most of it, which is a TIF designation that should be typically for blighted areas, appropriate when part of the development plan is for market-rate housing. There's a couple of things in that. First of all, the TIF statute requires that 25% of the land be suitable for residential development and not 100%, but in any case, the blighted language that you referred to doesn't refer to the post-development condition, which obviously the goal is to eliminate the blight. It refers to the pre-development condition. So the operative judgment on whether or not an area is blighted or needs redevelopment, or whatever language you want to use, applies to what's there now. TIF is going to try to change, not the development plan to be implemented.
The other, I'm going to close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. Councillors?
Well, Mr. Chairman, we would like to move to approve the designation of the TIF District Development Program and Credit Enhancement Agreement per the attached City Council Resolution.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Six in favor. All those opposed? Any abstentions? And one abstention. Motion passes. Item 13, public hearing in action on council order number 062002, the Ellsworth School Budget Resolutions for FY 2021. And I forget, Mr. Bunker was on there, and I was going to say goodbye, but he has left. So again, with this being a public hearing, if you have comments on this item, please feel free to email those in now. And let me go through and read the entire list of items, and then we'll go from there. So, Order approving state-local EPS funding allocation for public education from kindergarten to grade 12 for Ellsworth Schools for FY 2021. B, Order approving non-state-funded school construction debt service for Ellsworth Schools for FY 2021. C, Order raising and appropriating additional local funds for Ellsworth Schools for FY 2021. D, Order approving total school operating budget for Ellsworth Schools for FY 2021. E, Order appropriating and raising funds for adult education for FY 2021 as required by the Maine Revised Statutes Title 20-A MRSA, Section 8603-A1. F, Order raising local funds for food service in the Ellsworth Public Schools for FY 2021. G, Order authorizing expenditure of grants and other receipts for school department programs. H, Order authorizing disposition of additional state funding for public schools for FY 2021 in the event of an increase. So with the councillors. Any questions? Would we like Superintendent Higgins? Any questions for? Anything you want to add, Superintendent?
You've had my budget presentation, and certainly willing to answer any questions that you have a public ask.
So let me open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. No comments at this time. Any councillors have any questions?
Do you have an email from Melinda Workman? She says she sent an email.
I do not. I have not received. So my email address again is, do you have it in front of you, what she wrote?
No, she just said she sent you an email.
Oh, okay. So it's dhamilton@ellsworthmain.gov. I haven't received it.
I haven't received one either.
So no questions? I'm not seeing any other. Let me do this, though, just in case. I will log out and go back in, just to make sure that there isn't something going on. I've refreshed, and I still don't have anything there, so. So I will close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. Councillors?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the school budget for 2021 as presented.
A, B, and C. And then we can do D through H together.
I believe they can. I don't think we've ever done that in the past.
So each one, each separate one?
This has to be done. Each one has to be read into the record, and then approved A, B, C, D, E, F, G, Q, X, Y, Z.
Okay, so.
So, move to approve Ellsworth School Budget Resolution FY 2021, Part A, Order approving state-local Ellsworth Public School funding allocation for the public education from kindergarten to grade 12 for Ellsworth Schools for fiscal year 2021.
You have a motion?
Part A.
Part A.
Second.
And second. Going to pause for a second?
Good.
I'm just here in case you have any questions.
So, sorry, just a test came through to make sure I was receiving emails, which I am. So we have a motion and a second for Part A. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, do we have an amount? $8,681,706.66 for Part A.
Let me just say that the amount in that is the amount that we are required to raise as a municipality in order to receive full state subsidy.
All right, motion and seconds. Any further discussion? All of those in favor? Unanimous? Part P, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve council order 062002B. It's ordered that the city will raise and appropriate for the annual payments of debt service previously approved by the legislative body for non-state-funded school construction projects or non-state-funded portions of school construction projects, in addition to the funds appropriated as the local share of the school's administrative units' contribution to the local cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade 12. School Board recommends $82,510.11.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Item C.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve council order 062002C. Ordered that the city of Ellsworth raise and appropriate $2,557,207.56 in additional local funds, which exceeds the state's essential programs and services allocation model by $2,557,207.56, as required to fund the budget recommended by the school board.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second. Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, is this the amount before or after the 2.5, before or after last Thursday's
These amounts are the corrected amounts with the, this budget's based on your reduction of $100,000 since our last discussion, correct?
I was not, I'm not aware that has been formally done. If there's going to be a reduction of $100,000, I will give you a revised figure for that. So my recommendation would be that you withdraw the second and withdraw the motion.
I guess I was under the impression there had been some discussions and that there was a reduction in line. I thought that was incorporated, the numbers sitting before us.
That was my understanding.
The numbers on the council orders in front of you are the numbers that the school board approved, and by law, that's what needs board approved, and by law, that's what needs to be on this document. If there is an adjustment to those, it would take place tonight.
And the superintendent is prepared to deal with that.
And with regard to a reduction of a hundred thousand dollars, I can provide the information in terms of what those numbers would be, if that's the council wish. And certainly, as a school department, you know that we came in with our budget consistent with the times. We came in with a just less than flat budget. But certainly, understanding the times and the needs, the school department is certainly willing to do its part to provide the appropriate tax burden, or no additional tax burden on our citizens. So I guess from my perspective, if I'm aware of what we are looking at, the council reducing, I can tell you what that number should be.
One way to do it, councillors, would be that we have a motion and second on IMC. We have not voted on it yet. There could be an amendment to the motion to reduce that amount by a hundred thousand dollars, and then we could vote on the amendment, and then that would change the overall motion. So that would be one way of doing that.
I also understand, but I assume that Mr. Higgins, having been here before with some experience, that the first two we passed, do those need to be adjusted?
No.
Which one needs to be adjusted?
You would need to adjust this article, and when you get to the next one, I will tell you which one it is and how much it would be.
Which articles do we, this one that we're on now, sir?
This one that we're on needs to be adjusted by a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so this, item C.
Item C, which is the additional local funds article, yes.
One hundred thousand, sounds good to me.
The number would be two million, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred seven dollars and fifty-six cents.
I'd like to amend my motion. Thank you, Mr. Blanchett. That the figures would be two million, four hundred fifty-seven thousand, two hundred seven dollars and fifty-six cents amended tonight, a reduction of a hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion and second to amend the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor of the amended motion? All opposed? Anybody abstaining? councillor Kaplan, did you want to vote for?
Yes.
For? Yes, okay. Unanimous. Item D.
Would this number need to be amended?
This is the total budget article, is that correct?
Reduce it by one hundred thousand.
No, reduce it by fifty thousand to twenty-two million, seven hundred forty-eight thousand, nine hundred eighteen dollars and seven cents.
Fifty on this one?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve Council Order zero six two zero zero two D. Ordered that the city of Ellsworth will authorize the school board to expend for the fiscal year beginning July one, 2020, and ending June thirty, 2021, from the school administrative units' contribution to the total cost of funding public education from kindergarten to grade twelve as described in the Essentials Programs and Services Funding Act, non-state funded school construction projects, additional local funds for school purposes under the Maine Revised Statutes Title twenty A, Section fifteen six ninety, unexpended balances, tuition receipts, state subsidy, and other receipts for the support of schools at a figure of twenty-two million, seven hundred forty-eight thousand, nine hundred eighteen dollars and seven cents.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
I wonder, Mr. Higgins, if I left that seven cents off, that would have screwed you up.
It would have been a lot of math work over the rest of the week, yes.
No further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Item E.
Do any of the following need to be adjusted?
No.
No?
No.
No, Mr. Chairman. Move to approve Council Order zero six two zero zero two E. Ordered that the city of Ellsworth appropriate two hundred ten thousand, eight hundred seventy-seven dollars and thirty-five cents for adult education and raise two hundred ten thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-five cents as the local share with authorization to expend any additional incidental or miscellaneous receipts in the interest and for the well-being of the adult education program.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Unanimous? Item F.
Mr. Chairman, on City Council Order zero six two zero zero two F. Ordered that the city authorizes that the sum of one hundred twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixteen cents is hereby raised for all other expenditures, the food service program, for fiscal year 2020 to 2021, and that the Ellsworth School Department is authorized to expend any unexpended balances and additional incidental or miscellaneous receipts in the interest and for the well-being of the food service program.
Have a motion? We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Item G.
Mr. Chairman, City Council Order zero six two zero zero two G. Ordered that in addition to amounts approved for the fiscal year 2020, 2021, school operating budget, the school board be hereby authorized to expend such other sums as may be received from the federal or state grants or programs or other sources during the fiscal year for school purposes, provided that such grants, programs, or other sources do not require the expenditure of other funds not appropriated for the school operating budget.
Have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? And item H.
Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Blanchett, you and I have been here before. Isn't this the point where we can allow the school board to keep anything that get over and above what we had anticipated on, although we may have the ability to have that returned to?
This is the one.
Yes, sir, Mr. Higgins.
And I believe in past years, the intent of this, if we were to receive additional subsidy, was to benefit the taxpayers.
Correct.
One of the ways of doing that is to reduce the local assessment for the school department, it doesn't go directly back, but it would reduce that tax burden. The one thing that I would ask with the way it's written is, we don't know this, but in the event that funding comes through to support any necessary COVID-related expenses in terms of the reopening of schools fully, that there be some consideration to using those to expend for those types of things, so it would not be a burden. Again, I don't know that that's going to happen, but in the event that it does, you know, and I mentioned that, most of you probably are aware that the framework from the Department of Education to guide us in planning for the reopening of schools was released last Thursday. It's quite a list, and there are a number of things that we're working on right now to determine what needs to be in place to safely reopen. There may be costs associated with that. Certainly, with the budgets approved and what we discussed about the use of fund balances and education reserves to help cover some of those costs, we have those things in place. But in the event that money does come from the Department of Education, either state or federal, I would ask that you at least consider a conversation on being able to use some of those as we identify potential costs.
There is a good point. I never, and I suppose in the world we're in now, we're not sure what is going to happen, and undoubtedly, in my mind, I cannot imagine that there won't be associated costs and burdens placed upon you to reopen that school. And I would assume that the state in its infinite wisdom will hopefully send us a little more money to offset that.
We certainly hope so. And again, if it's in the amount of straight subsidy, then certainly, I think the intent of the council and what we've done is, it goes right into reduce that local burden. But I think, given this circumstance, at least a conversation would be warranted.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah. This is an unusual year, and rather stated as we have in the past, that almost, you know, sweet talk has swung my vote.
In all my years, councillor Phillips, I've never been accused of sweet talk. This is a first. It's definitely not usually here.
I was going to say something, but I don't know if I can. I do think, I think.
I appreciate you not.
Yeah. I do think that, because what may happen is, although money may come through, through CARES Act or some other appropriation, it may not flow in that manner, but you still may incur costs. And so to try to even parse that out in terms of COVID-related funding, it might not come in that direction. The state can, they might use the COVID funding over here, but then have some extra. So I think it's in line with being able to, you are going to incur some pretty significant costs, whether it's busing and number, you know, all those things, so.
So the bottom line, where does that leave any extra funds that may come in? In whose charge?
After hearing his discussion, how many times do you want to handle it? And I can't imagine that it's going to be enough to significantly change the face of things. So my feeling is, after hearing his discussions and pointing out some very good points, that I would leave it as stated and let the school board use it to address the needs that are undoubtedly going to arise from the situation we're in now.
I have no doubt that there will be extra cost, related cost. I'd be more comfortable if we put a maximum, let's say, fifty thousand dollars, and this is all assuming that we got extra money coming in on anticipated funds, and then anything over that, then the school board comes to us for authorization to expend that. Well, a short time ago, it was mentioned that we should have a discussion. And I think, if the need arises, I think we should have a discussion. And I would like to think that if the need is there, that this council would certainly support the schools for as much of the money as they need.
Superintendent Higgins?
One thing I would add that might be helpful to this discussion is, with the release of that framework, that really gives us some concrete examples to look at what types of costs are maybe, and heard councillor Miller say there may be some equipment costs, you know, I just want you to think about this, with relationship to the number of restrooms in all of our schools. What is going to be the impact on our maintenance staff to properly clean and disinfect those, and how many times will it require additional staffing? Those are the types of things that we're working through right now. I could not give you even an estimate right now of what the costs may be. What I would say is, in the event that we do receive something, I would certainly work with our staff, our finance committee, and our school board, but also would come back and say to the council, look, these are the expenses that we're talking about. This is what we're looking for out of this additional money to use. Certainly, it's not a case where there's a check written and we just go and expend it. Doesn't happen, but certainly, that would be the intent.
I would just add, I think, given what we've heard so far, the initial forecasting, just through the early part, and we're not even through the meat of the year, that we're already, as a state, dealing with a significant shortfall. I think the state's going to be hard-pressed to even maintain, and so I think any dollars would go to maintaining their current level of funding for education. I don't think there'll be a lot there in excess. And I do believe that you might even run into the potential of having to hire additional instructors if the rules are such that you can only have so many students, and especially the younger classrooms, where older kids, you might be able to separate easier, younger, you might not. So for me, I think it's going to be one of those things. I think a discussion is appropriate. I don't think we're going to see a windfall from the state to support education. I think it's going to be the reverse, and we're going to be battling.
No offense, but I hope you're wrong on the second point, but I would agree. I don't think we're going to see it, but this has always been included on here, just so that there were options in the event that there were, but anytime we've ever received the money, additional money, it has gone to reduce the tax burden on our citizens. So, you know, we have a record of doing it that way. This is here as a matter of practice and protocol, and certainly, there would be communication. Appreciate you listening.
With that, further discussion or entertaining a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve zero six two zero zero two H. Ordered that in the event the Ellsworth School Department receives more state education subsidy than the amount included in its budget, the school board be authorized to use all or part of the additional state subsidy to increase expenditures to school purposes and cost centers categories, cost center categories approved by the school board, increase the allocation of finances in a reserve fund approved by the school board, and/or decrease the local cost share expectation as defined in Title twenty A, Section fifteen six seventy-one dash A, one B, or local property taxpayers for funding public education as approved by the school board.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes? And so with that, I just want to go back and apologize for the confusion. I did not realize that we needed to conduct it in this manner in terms of that additional reduction. That was my error, not the superintendent's. So I apologize for that bit of confusion, and thank you, councillor Blanchett, for steering us correctly on that. That was very helpful. And thank you and the school department for your work on the budget. I know that there were some tough decisions, and I think the recognition of what we're all going through as a community was certainly there, and I know, I certainly appreciate that. So thank you.
And there were some remaining tough decisions, but we will work on that, and then we'll communicate with Mrs. Grindel to make sure we get the proper figures for the validation referendum. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, item fourteen, public hearing. First, let me pause for a second, because we did have an email that came through, and I don't know what happened with the order of it, but Jason just forwarded it to me. And it goes back to a previous item, but I think it's only fair that I read what the comment was from the individuals. And so it's coming from Gordon and Melinda Workman, and it's related to the TIF Funding District. And they write, "On this issue, I feel as many do, that Ellsworth cannot afford this type of funding. Our city's infrastructure is already overloaded, schools, water, sewer, roads, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Two, our tax base cannot support such a tax break for developers. They have the money and backers already to support their developments. Three, to support such tax break, we'll have to fall on the backs of our property-owning residents. And four, if our property values do increase, that's more of a tax burden on property owners." So that was their comment. Looks like the email addresses were correct, from what I'm seeing, and it was sent at seven twenty-nine, so it looks like it may have ended up in our spam folders, but I don't know. So I apologize for that. One of the problems with this type of process is, we're susceptible to those types of issues. So I don't know if anybody wants to comment on that or not. All right, and we will move on to item fourteen, public hearing in action on the adoption of a continuing resolution to fund the city's various departments and accounts in an amount sufficient to finance necessary expenses until a final budget resolve is in force.
So due to the current pandemic, the election or the vote on the school budget has been moved to July fourteenth. Therefore, the municipal budget cannot be addressed until the school vote takes place. Our legal counsel has prepared a continuing resolution whereby we would, through the month of July, or as needed, fund our various departments and accounts within the city. I would note that this anticipates current funding levels. The reality is, we've been in a budget freeze for almost four months, so we would continue that current freeze through this period. It's a matter of a few weeks, hopefully. And whatever expenses are incurred would be rolled into the new budget when it was adopted. You have the resolution in front of you, and as well as the motion.
Councillors' comments? So just to reiterate what I said earlier for the public, is that this means that the final vote on the budget for FY 21 will not happen until July, which means that on all items that we've discussed with the budget, we will continue to accept public comment, have discussions, and encourage you to send those comments to us. And we will be taking the new budget up at the July meeting, where it will be a public hearing for that purpose. This will just continue the existing budget. So is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Public hearing, sir. Open the public hearing.
And the way your email's working, it should be good. Sometime around midnight, we'll get it.
So the public hearing is open on the continuing resolution. I will pause to see if anybody has a comment on that. I will pause to see if anybody has a comment on that. Seeing then, I will close the public hearing. The hearing is closed. Counselors.
Mr. Chairman, move to adopt a continuing resolution as presented to fund various departments and accounts of the city of Ellsworth for the month of July 2020 in order to finance necessary city expenses until a final budget resolve is adopted. In the event that a final budget resolve is not adopted by the end of July 2020, this process shall be repeated.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Item 15, council order number 062003, request of the deputy treasurer tax collector to set the interest rate on overdue taxes.
Good evening, Jennifer Merchant, Finance Director. Every June, the tax collector comes before you to set the interest rate on overdue taxes. The maximum rate of interest is established by the treasurer of the state and is based on the prime rate as published in the Wall Street Journal. There wasn't an increase in the prime rate from last year. In the past, the city has stayed within two to three percentage points of the maximum rate. Would the council like to recommend staying at 6% or making a change to the city's rate for FY '21?
I would, given what's been going on, I would leave it at 5%.
6%. 2019, 2018, this chart's upside down.
Oh.
I would have had it too.
6%.
Further discussion or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve council order 62003, request of the tax collector, deputy treasurer, to set the interest rate on overdue taxes at 6%.
Have a motion? We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Item 16, council order number 062004, appointment of city officials by the city council.
These are appointments by the council. Next are the appointments by the manager.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve council order 62004, the appointment of the city officials as presented.
Motion is second. Discussion?
Just one quick question. Manager Cole, just want to make sure you're up to the task of tree warden.
I heard he's good with bark.
That's all I had.
It's one of my favorite assignments.
I'd like to.
What exactly does the tree warden do?
Ah.
It's a secret.
He gets a badge.
It's actually a legitimate question.
Right.
I don't know what a tree warden does.
Are you supposed to inspect chestnuts or something?
Yes. I've never had a call on me to do my tree warden duty, but I stand ready as needed.
I'm waiting for one of your staff to send me an email to bail you out, but nothing's coming through.
I'd like to commend David on the fact that in recent years, he's risen to the occasion and has made sure that some very dangerous trees have been removed.
I've removed a few trees in my time.
Moving on.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Unanimous?
Well, this goes down.
Item 17, council order number 062005, approval of city manager's appointments. Item A is reappointments, and item B, new appointments.
Yeah, as the councilors know, certain positions are reappointed every year when you come join the city. However, are constitutes a new appointment. I have one new appointment this evening. As you all know, our city planner passed away, and we have been in the position of refilling our planner. We went through two rounds of interviews, the first with staff and the second with the Personnel Committee, and bring forward to you tonight, and I always have trouble pronouncing this, Teresa Oleksiu has accepted the position of planner with the city of Ellsworth and plans to join us on July 6th pursuant to the city charter. This is subject to council confirmation upon joining the city annually thereafter. Teresa is watching tonight, as is Development Services Director Jana Richards, who wrote the memo in your packet regarding Teresa. She's got a rich planning background with the State Planning Office, Anderson Skoggin Valley Council of Governments, City of Gopsom, City of Biddeford. She's been very active with the main association of planners. She's taken some time off to raise her children, and now is looking forward to getting back up to Hancock County. She actually, I believe she worked for Acadia National Park for seven or eight years early in her career, so this county is no stranger to her. And I would request confirmation, an appointment of Teresa Oleksiu as planner for the city of Ellsworth.
Counselors.
Mr. Chairman, move to confirm the appointment of Teresa Oleksiu as planner for the city of Ellsworth. Second.
A second. Any further comments?
This will be approving Part B of the AB.
Oh, this is true.
Sorry. And obviously, any questions you have on the annual appointments.
Just fine.
We'll do them individually.
Yeah, yeah, just call.
So this will be for item, council order 062005B. We have a motion.
A second.
A second. All in favor? Unanimous?
I had to take a shot at pronouncing that name.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve 62005A, the appointment of the city, the confirmation of the city manager's appointments.
Second.
Motion is second. Further discussion? Seeing then, all those in favor? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
With that law and the action, I did find out that the tree wardens in charge of, in control of all public shade trees planted along the highways and in the parks of the municipality by state law.
Thank you.
Jason just sent that to me.
Now we're going to see you wandering out looking for trees. All right, so while I try to compose here, if you, we're heading into item 18, it's a public hearing, so I would encourage you, if you have a comment in the public, to please email that in now so that when we get to it, I'll be able to read your comments. So item 18 is public hearing in action on council order number 062006, authorization for tax anticipation borrowing in the amount of $2 million.
On Friday, June 5th, 2020, at 10:00 a.m., the city accepted bids for a tax anticipation note. The proceeds of the tax anticipation note will be used for financing governmental activities and obligations of the city in anticipation of funds to be raised by taxation. In preparation for the tax anticipation note for FY '21, a cash analysis was prepared in order to determine how much money the city would require. It was decided that $2 million would best fit the cash, best fit the cash needs of the city. The bid results were as follows. Key Bank, 1.4% with interest of $28,122.74, the first at 1.41% with interest at $28,513. Our Harbor Bank and Trust, 1.44% interest, $28,800. Bangor Savings at 1.95%, interest would be $38,893.15. And Machias Savings Bank at 1.99% with total interest of $39,690.96.
The, both Key and the first had the same interest rate. I assume the small difference is the way the interest is figured in their individual.
Yes, Key Bank does theirs on 364 days, and the first was 360.
Yeah, just the way they are.
And so this is a loan in anticipation of taxes received. What happens if we don't take the loan? What happens?
We won't have the cash flow to pay our bills to make payroll.
We're not allowed to just borrow the money. We have to produce a cash flow estimate to the bond council, which I actually looked at today, and so there has to be a basis for it.
Really, effectively similar to a business is it's a line of credit to the ebb and flow of cash in, cash out.
I would well assume that this particular year would be timing being off and on tax revenue that would be much needed time we do payroll and meet our expenses. The flow, the graph will pass, we do need the money.
So where this is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Councilor Blanchett?
I'll wait till it closes.
And I do not have any comments. So I will close the public hearing. Councilor Blanchett?
Mr. Chairman, move to award the tax anticipation note low bid to Key Bank at an interest rate of 1.41%.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Item 19, presentation on the local roads work plan and roadwork scheduled for this season.
We need to call Lisa and Monique.
Oh, I'm here.
Oh, you're, step ahead of me.
Okay. Good evening, councilor. Sorry, this is a little odd. I can't really see you. But councilor, Chairman Hamilton asked me to do a bit of a presentation at the budget meeting. I don't really have a presentation per se. I think I'm just going to basically go over some of the stuff we've done, some of the stuff remaining to be funded out of the current fiscal year, and then some possibilities for the future depending on funding and approved budget in the future. Does that sound acceptable?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So I just wanted to reiterate some of the things that many people have obviously seen finished recently. Best part of this current fiscal year would be the repaving of Oak Street or the shim and overlay that was completed on Oak Street that the crew, R2, is now finishing up some of the cleanup in gravel driveways and shoulder backing up. Should be done hopefully tomorrow. Last week, we also finished putting the top coat on a section of Branch Pond Road as well as a thick overlay on a section of the Gary Moore Road. We have, in the next couple of months, we are going to be working on some drainage improvements along Spruce Street and Pleasant Street. And then once those drainage improvements are completed, we intend to have the pavers back and do a combination of overlays and melon fills on Spruce, Pleasant, and Franklin Streets. There's intentions to overlay a section of, well, just Kingsland Crossing to fix some issues there. There's also on the drawing board, and we ran into some easement issues, but hopefully those get worked out. We are still working on a drainage project on Water Street near Foster Street in hopes that that may get done this fall or next spring, if we can get that worked out. There's possibility of some drainage work at the South Street Bridge Hill location as there's some drainage things there that could use improvement. Those are the things that are on the current fiscal year's agenda, and again, depending on funding, you know, for this remaining year as well as going forward, some of those could get adjusted. With that being said, going forward into the next fiscal year, the idea is if the local roads committee's $1.5 million request were to be approved, some of the roads that we're looking to do work on are another section of the Gary Moore Road, a section of the Happy Town Road from approximately Maripole 24, which no one's going to know, but to approximately 332 Happy Town Road. That's a section of the paved road that's in the worst condition. There's a section of Grant Street about a quarter mile from approximately 210 Grant Street to 94 Grant Street. Are the part of Lake's Lane that the city owns, the paved part of Lake's Lane. Chapel Street, another section of the Gary Moore Road, there's a hill that has, that needs to be some drainage concerns, and then repaving that's on the agenda, hopefully. A paved approach at Sunset Park, right now it's gravel onto pavement, and the idea is to do a 75-foot section at the approach with 180 so that cars are on a paved apron as they're pulling out onto the high-speed Route 180. There's some overhead signage, some of the no-left turns and just overhead signage that are on signal wires have come down over the years, and we're looking to replace those. We are looking to do some more drainage projects throughout the city as well as fund our bulk culvert purchase so that we can continue to do drainage upgrades throughout the city as they are needed. There's some potential, there's a request for some match funding for engineering for an MPI, a municipal partnership with the DOT, to start the engineering process on redoing the section of Christian Ridge from Red Bridge back to the Bucksport Road. There's approximately three miles of crack treatment on Red Bridge Road as well as on Beachland Road. And then there is the, so the, also the scoping and starting the process of, even though we overlaid Oak Street, the hope is to do a complete reconstruct in the not-too-distant future, and there was some money to hopefully be set aside to start that process, as well as some of the downstream drainage down Park Street and Birch Avenue would need to be upgraded as part of that project. And the idea would be to start the process of those in the next couple of years so that when Oak Street came back around, we would already have the downstream drainage taken care of. So those are the big picture items. Does anybody have any questions or anything else I can answer while we're on the phone?
Well, Lisa, I'm kind of hoping if you have a little money left over that the worst section of Water Street at the top of the hill before you get to the harbor could use a little grooming. It's not a very big area, but it's pretty rough in the southbound lane. And if you're going to be doing something at the bottom of Foster Street, perhaps a little hole filling on the, that would be the eastbound lane on Foster Street, if you have a little extra money.
There's always possibility, Sean.
That's great.
Counselor Grindel.
Lisa, I was wondering on the Kingsland Crossing.
Lisa, I was wondering on the Kingsland Crossing, was there, I thought at one point we discussed reimbursement from some of the businesses or due to the, and maybe I have the, Kingsland Crossing is, or Jackson Lab and.
That was associated with the First.
Yes.
There is a section of Kingsland Crossing that was dug up for a project on the end of the road by contractor. And there, the idea is that they would fund the portion that is theirs and then we would pay for the additional. So it would be basically comes out to be in about a third their funding and a two-thirds our funding based on the square footage of the area to be done.
Okay, thank you.
Lisa, the Birch Avenue and the Park Street downstream that you mentioned in the scoping project, is Church Street going to be included in that also?
The, from what I know so far is that Church and Park are the main ones that drain the water from uphill on the other side of Oak Street. I'm not sure that much water comes down Church Street at the moment. Most of it kind of goes cross-country from, I'm sure I did these right, Park, and it kind of goes behind buildings and under the DMV and kind of down to City Hall, actually. So it's a possibility that we're going to reroute the whole thing in that Church Street and each individual street would get a whole new line down it. That's part of what we need to look into is what's the best way to get the water from the uphill side of Oak Street to the, to go down towards the river.
I know that there were three or four backyards that have city drains going through or underneath private property. I was under the impression at some point that those were going to be corrected whenever Oak Street will finally get its complete rebuilding. I just want to make sure that if we're going to do two streets, that we also look at Church and see if it's necessary. That's all.
I think the ultimate end, and this is, like I said, based on what I know of the area thus far, and that's kind of what the scoping is part of. But my assessment would be that ultimately, a lot of the backyards or cross-country, as we call it, would be taken out and most of the lines or most of the water would run underground each, down each of the actual roadways through catch basins and underground piping and try to eliminate the ones that go under lawns and under buildings and stuff that we don't have access to and can't maintain.
All right. Thank you.
Lisa, thanks for pulling that together. I just think it's helpful for the public to kind of have a sense with the roads are obviously a big concern for people. So to be able to hear what the priority thoughts are as we're debating the budget and what we can do is I just think it's helpful. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So item 20, discussion and update from the May 7, 2020 Public Safety Planning Committee meeting concerning the role of emergency medical services within the Ellsworth Fire Department. A member of the committee that wants to kick this off?
Well, we had a robust discussion. And this is up to the council how far we want, if we want to continue to move forward and if we do, to what extent we want to move forward, or if we want to back away from it or do limited services.
So let me, before we get into the discussion, I have received one comment. So I just, let me read that so that it's on the front end of the discussion for everyone here. It's from Mariah Curtis. She writes, hello, my grandmother Nancy Davis bled to death for 40 minutes from a small Varicose vein while waiting for an ambulance at 16 Wood Street. This was before the perfectly capable fire department was being dispatched to medical calls as licensed first responders. If you choose to stop having the fire department respond to calls within the city, this will happen again and it could be one of your family members. Had the fire department been licensed, then she would be alive after their life-saving interventions. The city council needs to educate themselves on all aspects of EMS and stop deferring this and waiting until the end of meetings to discuss it. They are licensed, they have the equipment, they are capable, they will save lives. Mariah Curtis. Chief Tepper, do you have anything you want to?
So a little bit of background. As you know, we were addressed by the Maine EMS Board, and I cannot go into too much detail, fine detail of that because it's an executive session thing. But the outcome of the discussion that we had with them was left at a letter of recommendation, basically to have us, as Counselor Phillips has alluded to, to either progress onward, fully do an EMS, provide in a modified response plan, which could be a host of different modifications to do that, or eliminate it completely and rescind the license. I'll be very frank and honest. My suggestion would be to do it full-fledged and to go to every call. Some of the questions that was posed to me would be what would that cost estimate be if we did go to every call, every 901 EMS call in the city of Ellsworth, and also Fletcher's Landing Township since we do cover that area by contract. I got to be honest with you, I have somewhat limited data resources to base my estimates on. But we've worked through what we've seen in the timeframe that we've been providing EMS from the beginning in October of 2019, and then when the, it was brought to our attention that according to our license, we were supposed to go to all calls. So there's a shorter window there of us responding to all calls in the city of Ellsworth. And doing that comparison, kind of a summary note for you, it was a big concern of how much overtime was involved in responding to these calls. And within an 11th month data period, that brings into an average of 5.63 hours of overtime per month. And that overtime that I'm speaking of is when off-duty personnel come back due to us going onto a call. That changed a little bit from the period of July of 2019 through March of 2020, taking that entire area in. It was 6.5 hours of overtime per month. And more recently, from April to May of 2020, the point of time when we were going to all calls, we were seeing an average of five overtime hours per month. So it's a fairly small amount of number. And I will say that that's without having any set policy in place on when does somebody come back to fill in when our crew on duty is out on a call. So we may be able to limit that to some extent. How do we get to those overtime hours? So typically, our on-duty staff will go to the calls, obviously. Depending on the severity of the call and the information that we get from it, it may be two of our duty staff, it may be three, it may be all four of them go on it. And that depends on the seriousness level of the call and what we get for information to the details of the call. So for instance, if it's a cardiac arrest call, all four people on duty are going to it because it takes a lot of people to handle a CPI call. If it's, for instance, somebody's fallen off a ladder or off a roof and there's a trauma involved and there's a potential of moving a patient a distance to get them to the ambulance, that's a judgment call. Is that a three or four-person response? So when that happens and we have the majority of our staff that's on duty respond to a call, that is what is warranting to, warranting to us to have callback. So the off-duty personnel are listening, they're making that judgment call. Am I needed to come back for this call that was just toned out? And then additionally to that, if the on-duty officer recognizes that their crew is going to be committed to a particular call, he will either call back to the station to see if somebody's here already. And if he doesn't get a reply, he will ask the dispatches to put out a second tone for manpower for the station. So those are the instances when we have overtime needs because people is coming back from off-duty hours. But again, that is a relatively small amount of time. And if I multiply those hours based on the information that I got now, and I have to stress that, we don't have a tremendous amount of data to build these decisions on, but based on what I have for data, you're looking at roughly $2,000 worth of overtime for the year based on our average overtime rate. Additionally to that, is a concern for what is our fuel cost going to change if we're responding to more calls? So we did a spreadsheet over the year and comparing basically our Engine 2 and our Rescue 5. Those two trucks are typically the ones that are going on EMS calls. There may be some instances where a different truck goes, but for the most part, it's these two. And from 2019 to 2020, if I took those two trucks and compared the entire year, it was a very minimal difference of about $87 per month combination between those two trucks from 2019 to 2020. That, to me, is as insignificant as it could have been the number of calls that we went on for fire calls last year versus fire calls this year and coupled in with EMS. But again, a very small difference. Given a very conservative approach to that, so we don't underestimate, I would say if we based $100 a month on increased fuel usage or $1,200 for the year, I think we'd be very comfortable in proposing whatever costs. And this is again, based on if we go on all calls in Ellsworth. Now, the other interesting fact to those numbers and part of doing our research and collecting the data, if we went on all EMS calls in Ellsworth, we're going to see an increased fuel usage. If we go on all of the calls or the Charlie, Delta, and Echo calls, the more serious leveled calls, we're going to see roughly the same amount of overtime need because again, it's those more serious calls that are committing our staff that is going to require us to have people to come back and cover the station or assist on the incident scene. So honestly, probably the fuel is the biggest difference. And then the other thing that we had come up with is what would be other operational costs for the year that would be different than what we would be doing if we were just strictly staying with fire-based stuff. And these numbers, again, I had very little historical information to base this stuff on. So we compared ourselves with Hancock Fire Department based on what they use for their budgets for supplies, equipment, getting the annual license and insurance costs. And they budget $2,000 a year for supplies. And supplies in this category would be bandages, single-use type items that we might use on an incident scene that wouldn't necessarily be replenished one-for-one by the ambulance service. For instance, if we go and help somebody, but they sign off and they don't want to do a transport, the ambulance isn't going to be billing for that transport. Therefore, we wouldn't be able to get replenished one-for-one for the use of some of these minor supplies. If the ambulance transports them, they're going to be billing the patient. They give us back what we use to help them out, bandage-wise and stuff like that. They also budget $2,000 a year for annual equipment costs. And my understanding of this is if they use, again, it's kind of on the same line as the supplies. If they use some sort of a piece of equipment such as splinting or a backboard or something and it gets damaged or to the point where it can't be cleaned properly and has to be discarded, this is an allowance for that as well. The license fee is $100. That's already built into my regular budget already that I've proposed to you. And then the annual insurance cost was $517, and that's the liability insurance that the city picked up through Maine Municipal Association. And I believe that was in the general insurance category already. So you're looking at roughly $4,000. And again, that's a, an estimate based on what we've got for basic data. So at the end of the day, if we added that all up, hopefully you guys get the same figure that I have. We're looking at roughly $7,800 for an annual need to continue to do EMS.
Counsel Miller.
What about the extra cost in training?
So.
Yearly training and recertification?
Yep. So a lot of the CEU credits that we need to be able to get can be provided either online or through Northern Line Can Help Us. There are some costs, and I didn't miss putting that in here, where we might have to go to do a hands-on certification training or something like that. So yes. But I'm pretty confident in my regular training budget that we can absorb that so there'd be no increase for that.
And then one more would be the extra dispatcher that might be needed? How do you feel about?
Well, Chief Mojo probably would speak better to this overseeing the dispatches. I do know that we're a very small percentage, our call volume would certainly increase, but we're a small percentage in the overall call volume that the dispatches do handle for us, both the Ellsworth dispatches and the RCC.
Chief, what about the cost of the equipment? They've got, they will respond in the trucks? The added miles that will be put on them in the course of a year, costing some of our streets the added beatings that they'll take. Has that been factored in?
I guess the best answer I can give you is no because I don't know when and how much that would accumulate over time. I mean, if you go down the road today and break something, just simply driving hitting a puddle or whatever, we may go years without doing that.
Another item that you mentioned, what do you call it, protective gear, the mask and gloves and such?
Supplies, yeah.
Supplies. What about the, well, in this COVID era, the PPE, the cost of that, has that been factored?
I would, I would say that would be.
The N95 masks, the gowns.
That would be part of the annual equipment needs and supplies as part of these numbers.
And what is the minimum callback number of hours that employee will get?
So, yep, by contract, any callback hours, the individual gets two-hour minimum callback unless there are reoccurring calls back-to-back. And then it's minimum two, and then whatever the numbers add up to it. If they were there for three calls directly in a row, it'd be two hours minimum and however long those three hour, three calls went. If they're separated, then it's a minimum two-hour callback for each call. And those numbers that I gave you for the callbacks that we had was due to that.
Potentially, did I hear you say correctly that, or infer that all four on-duty firefighters at any given time could be answering a call in Fletcher's Landing in a, what do you call it, C, D, or E?
Correct. Absolutely, that is the case with common sense played into the equation so that we don't strip the town completely of other coverage. And again, that's why, just like a fire call, if we had a fire call in Fletcher's Landing that same way, the staff would all be there and we'd have other people coming in and mutual aid departments covering us. It does get a little bit more tricky with mutual aid coverage for EMS because not all fire departments have that ability to offer that, nor do we want to necessarily go to other towns on a, on a everyday occurrence with mutual aid of EMS.
And how many calls? Is there any kind of a guess or is it even just throwing a dart? Would there be? Would there be that we would answer in Fletcher's Landing?
So, for the last couple of years, we've probably been up there at most a half a dozen times per year, and that's probably exaggerated, to be honest with you. I could get that number.
And that was on medical calls?
Any call that we've gone up there. But the potential is always there for anything.
And one more thing, and then I'll tell the questions I have. In the previous paperwork that you presented, the, one of the options that the state presented was to classify Ellsworth, we would have to apply annually, and we could do it up to three years, as a, and I don't have the phrase in front of me.
Yeah.
We would be a test...
Demonstration?
A demonstration site.
My understanding is we've passed that already.
How have we passed that?
Being a licensed entity.
But if we, would, if we turn the license in or made moves to, is that option still open to us?
I would have to ask on that one. I don't know the answer to that question.
That one I'd like to know, because it takes us out from under the gun.
It also puts us back under the gun, because if we're not a licensed agency, we have licensed individuals, and that would put that individual in a position of duty to act, because he carries that license. And when he's on an accident scene and somebody's there that needs help, we would be then telling him, you need to stand back and do nothing.
If we didn't have that demonstration site permit? But if we had, the way I read it, if we have that permit, then that duty person can respond to the accident scene or to the site of the emergency?
I can't answer to that question. I don't know that enough in detail, and I wouldn't dare say yes or no or otherwise, honestly.
If you would look into that, please, I would appreciate it.
Counsel Catherine.
I have a few questions. So just reiterating, you folks are BLS certified?
We are, we are. The city is licensed to EMT basic level, and most of the group has trained to EMT basic. We still have seven that need to fulfill the National Registry Death. We're still waiting on that.
Okay. So that means that, for example, you can operate a AED if needed, but you can't do lidocaine, epinephrine, things along those lines. In that particular scenario that that person wrote in about, you could apply direct pressure to that bleeding varicosity until Northern Light arrived?
Yes.
And had you done that, would that patient still be alive?
I would presume that that would have made a difference in the outcome.
Okay. So for $7,800, if somebody's suffering from sudden cardiac arrest from something like WPW or Wolf-Parkinson-White syndrome, then you could apply an AED and potentially correct that problem?
Yes.
And save that person's life, or apply direct pressure until an ambulance can arrive for transport?
Yes.
So for $7,800, we could potentially save lives. And are you able to bill for your services through Medicare, Medicaid, private insurance?
No, because we're not transporting at this point.
Okay. What would you say the number of basic transports between calls and inter-facility transports there are in the city of Ellsworth and Fletcher's Landing?
Probably in the vicinity of 1,500-ish.
Okay. And if you were to be able to bill for those services, given that the average basic level transport is between $600 and $1,000 per transport, and you would be able to bill for those services, that could potentially bring in 1,500 times 600 at the very least?
I, one of the things that we talked about when the whole idea of EMS came into play was taking baby steps, and I'm 100% for that. Again, we don't have everybody overly experienced, if you will, time-wise and patient interaction-wise. So being able to do what we're doing as first responders and working side-by-side with the ambulance has given us the opportunity to build that time and experience. When hopefully that day comes down the road, when the city chooses to have an ambulance, then the parts of the billing cycle come into play, parts of main care and Medicare and all that stuff come into play, and hopefully we'll be much better and ready to take on that task. I don't think we're quite there yet. But you do make a point, you know, at some point, there's a revenue stream to offset the costs there, definitely.
Yes. And what's the average response time for a call from, from just Ellsworth, from the time the call is toned out until the time of arrival?
Till arrival, probably within five minutes or so. It depends on where it is in the city. I mean, obviously, up on the Bangor Road or the Bucksport Road, the further you get out there, the longer that response time is going to be, which is going to be the same for the ambulance as well. But in the general Ellsworth area, you know, within five minutes, probably.
Okay. And knowing that Northern Light does a lot of the inter-facility transport from, whether it's Main Coast, Blue Hill, or Bar Harbor, they have their ambulances out doing inter-facility transports, and sometimes you have to get their basic level or their ACLS, whatever their ambulance is, is called all the way from Dedham to respond to Ellsworth. And in that particular case, that day, I believe that was the situation, is that the third backup ambulance was in Dedham. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so having you...
In fact, I think it was coming all the way from Bangor, it was headed to Stage in Dedham, so it was on its way, but it did come from that direction, yes.
Okay. So having somebody coming all the way from either Bangor or Dedham, when seconds matter, and you folks lived, what, half a mile from that patient?
A little bit more, but yes.
So for $7,800, when seconds matter, something like that would have made a big difference?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I have a comment from Gary Fortier, Westwood Drive. He said, "The citizens of Ellsworth deserve the additional coverage, five to six hours of overtime in a month, minor expense, grant still alive, priceless, full steam ahead. Do what is right for our citizens and all the visitors to our community. Thanks." I do have a question. So you answered the question about the licensure level, the EMT basic. That's the level that your team will be credentialed, and you have seven people that are still in process?
Correct.
But that's going to be at that level. Anything beyond that, it requires a higher-level license. So to maintain an ambulance, as an outright ambulance, is going to require a lot more training and a higher-level staffing?
You could have it at any different level. You could have a basic-level transport and ambulance. Again, they can only practice to that basic level.
Practice that, but it would not be fulfilling the needs of an ambulance service in terms of a patient that needed some other type of intervention.
Correct. There are times that we have a basic ambulance with Northern Light down here if they don't have paramedics to staff it with as well. So that, depending on staffing levels, that varies a little bit, but yes.
And to maintain one ambulance, you're talking to be able to do that on 24/7 basis, about 10, 10 to 12 staff, FTEs, 10 FTEs to manage that for one, per ambulance, if the city were in that direction?
Yeah, a minimum of six, if you cover the staff ratio 24/7, but yeah.
Yeah, so that's been a part of the discussion in terms of the difficulty, in terms of becoming a provider of an ambulance service. Now, we're taking on a whole different level of staffing recruitment, and we already know that it's difficult to recruit. So it's a challenge that we would face as a community. And I only say that not to say that down the road it wouldn't be appropriate, but it's very expensive. We looked at that, and we do have a partnership that we need to come back and revisit and have a discussion about how that's working, what are the pitfalls, how can we improve it? And then there might not be a need for the city to necessarily take that on if we can address some of the problems, but it would be a very expensive proposition, and the transport alone doesn't necessarily cover the costs. Every community is different. Some do very well, but there are other communities that don't fare so well in terms of trying to do that. So I think this, it's just to say that I think having advanced training at the EMT level to respond at a small cost has some, makes some sense in terms of serving the community. I just, at this point, I would hope that that's what our focus is, that our focus stays in terms of meeting that need, getting proficient at it, making sure that all, if we're doing it, that all the firefighters are trained, that we get to that place, that they're comfortable doing that, and that we recognize that we don't want to just keep trying to jump and push to a level where it may not be great for the city from just the perspective of you take that on, and then trying to maintain that has a lot of challenges. So I just would hope that we proceed carefully with it while getting to a level that we can support the needs of the residents.
I agree 100%. I think another point, if I may, just to interject, that kind of crosses between both your comments, that not all transport calls that an ambulance takes get paid. So again, that's a key factor, that some of those are going to be free transports and are going to cost us a little bit of money, so it isn't all profit, definitely.
And it can push out a viable service that exists. Ellsworth is, when you look at, in terms of the reimbursement that a provider receives, this is a part of the market, a significant part of the market. And if that goes away because we take over that part, we could jeopardize that stability for the residents of Ellsworth, because we would need more than one ambulance, and we probably wouldn't be able to afford more than one. So, I mean, there's just a lot of pitfalls. It's definitely something that requires a lot of due diligence on. Counsel Phillips, do you have some?
So, when you get a call, it's an EMS call, I think we've been through this, but again, in the public session, you're going to respond to EMS. Does it come through dispatch, comes from MedCom? How does it come into your office?
So the fire department gets dispatched by our own Ellsworth dispatches or the RCC. And then again, that depends on the timeframe of when the call comes in, whether our dispatches are handling our calls or the RCC. The ambulance gets dispatched by MedCom. That's a private dispatching service that they hire out of Bangor.
So it's a call requiring medical services. Where does it come from?
If you dial 911, and these are the calls that we're talking about, 911 emergency calls, it's going to go into the RCC, over to the county courthouse.
Okay.
They're going to, emergency medical dispatch that call, determine what your need is, and they're going to determine based on your responses that you need an ambulance. And because it's in the city of Ellsworth, the fire department would be responding with that ambulance. They're going to make two phone calls. They're going to transfer the call to MedCom first, because the priority is to get the ambulance on the road. And then second, they're either going to tone us out from the RCC if it's from 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM, and if it's in between 7:00 AM and 11:00 PM, the Ellsworth dispatch is going to tone us out. So two entities are making the two of us go together.
I guess the bottom line is, so that call goes to 911, the dispatcher, person on duty, basically goes through a checklist, grades it, A, B, C, D?
Yes.
Lot of trouble, no trouble?
Yes.
So then it's decided it's a medical call, that they need the ambulance, so they call in the ambulance. Why are you getting the call too? Because you requested it, or because it's done automatically?
It's done automatically.
You automatically get that call for medical, on everything?
We are, yes.
And you did not request it?
Because our licensed status says that any 911 medical call that comes into the city of Ellsworth, tone the fire department on to go with the ambulance.
Prior to you obtaining the license that we're talking about, you didn't get those calls?
Correct. Then we were getting requested by the ambulance because they needed additional support.
Okay. I guess, obviously, the number one, most important thing is to protect and do as much as we can for the citizens of Ellsworth, and to keep them safe as best possible. How far we want to get into that, I kind of, you come up with $7,800, but I feel that probably that's pretty darn light on everything that'll happen. I also have some real issues believing that with you in here every year asking for more staff and more staff, that you're going to be able to start responding to this stuff and do it responsibly and cover everything with your current staff. I still feel that shortly, and whether it's necessary or not, you're going to need more full-time staff, whether it be this year or next. But as your call volume builds and you build business, then your demands are going to be increased. There's no way that it can't happen. And at this point, we have a pretty good relationship with Northern Lights and the medical service, and I understand that you're going to run into situations that no one can anticipate, and that you're going to need those calls. But to jump into it and go further into it, between the, I guess you haven't sold me yet on it. Obviously, you haven't. I still think there's hidden costs and hidden issues that are there that'll pop up. But anyway, that's my sense.
Counsel Miller.
I still think there are extra costs that'll come also. But I read a lot of studies from a lot of the cities around the country, and the way that they're doing it. The most cost-effective and safest way that most of these cities came up with was the relationship that we have now, that they have, like Northern Light and the fire department going out together. It was just the safest and most cost-effective way they found it. The partnership.
Counsel.
So, Counselors, this is not an item that we have any decision to make this evening. However, we, it's a question out there in terms of the license, so I'm wondering if the committee wants to prepare something for next meeting for the council to consider? If that would make sense?
Yeah, we can meet and have a discussion, I think. Try to sort it out.
Thank you, Chito.
Thank you.
Item 21, executive session to discuss labor negotiations between the city of Ellsworth and the Massachusetts and Northern New England Labor's District Council on behalf of Local 327 Ellsworth Wastewater Treatment Plant Unit in accordance with MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Section 405, Paragraph 6D.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
And we will be coming back out of executive session to report back out on this item. So, do we have a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor of going to executive session? Ananamous? We'll move into executive session. And Counselors, if you'd like to take a five-minute break. You're out of executive session. Item number 22, council order number 062007, action on discussion between the city of Ellsworth and the Massachusetts and Northern New England Labor's District Council on behalf of Local 327 Ellsworth Wastewater Treatment Plant Unit.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve a one-year extension of the current contract with the wastewater treatment unit with the following two changes. First, the same cost of living increase given to non-unionized employees, if any, will be given to the unit. And second, striking language regarding agency fees held unconstitutional by the U.S. Supreme Court in Janus versus AFSCME in 2018. Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor? Ananamous? And just real quick before moving into item number 23, which was voted on and added, I just want to let the public know that we, that I do monitor the emails throughout the course of the meeting, and I read the ones that come in and that are from Ellsworth residents. And so the situation, if they do not come in through the email system, I apologize for that. That was the case this evening, but we will read them. We're trying to make sure that the voice is heard. There's no attempt to screen out comments. If they come in, they are read. So with that, item 23 was an additional item to move into executive session. Counsel Miller, do you have that in front of you? Counsel Miller, do you have that in front of you?
Make a motion to move into executive session to discuss the condition acquisition or use of real or personal property permanently attached to real property or interests therein of disposition of publicly held property or economic development only if premature disposition of the information would be prejudiced to the competitive or bargaining position of the body or agency in accordance with MRSA Title I, Chapter 13, Section 405, Paragraph 6C. Actions is needed on the part of the committee or anticipated following the executive session.
So we have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, go in executive session. Unanimous. We are in executive session. We're back.
Good luck with your...
Counsel Miller.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion for the city manager and his representative to negotiate with an unknown vendor for solar energy provider for the city of Ellsworth.
We have a motion to a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 24, adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
And we are adjourned.